I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now Minister Fay Davis will deliver the invocation.
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, whom we love, Lord, we come to you right now first to invite your presence in this meeting. Father, we come acknowledging that you are sovereign and holy. Father, we pray this evening for our children. God, we pray to you for their parents, for all those who support them. Father, we pray for Putnam County. We pray for the state of Florida. Father God, we pray for the leadership. God, we pray for this board, who has an awesome task. God, we ask that you gird up their minds, oh God, so that they, with the wisdom from on high, that they will need to lead us. God, we just gonna thank you right now for what you've done. We're gonna thank you for what you're going to do. And Father God, we just gonna, we're gonna remember you. We're gonna give you honor, praise, and glory. And we thank you for being in the midst of us right now. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Okay, before we start our first presentation from the Crime Stoppers poster winners, we're gonna take a minute to get hooked up to Oklahoma, because one of our winners in this year's contest has since moved to Oklahoma. And so, we're gonna connect with her school and present her this award.
Welcome to Putnam County. Where's Hannah? Very good, surrounded, okay. Well, can you hear us okay?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. Well, this is Mr. Larissa, and he's gonna talk, okay?
Hello there. Whereabouts, whereabouts in Oklahoma are you?
El Rio, between El Rio and New York.
Well, I wish, I wish I knew where that was. I have no idea.
The center.
Well, this is a first. I'm RJ Larissa, I'm your elected state attorney, and we're here today to recognize folks that have participated in the Crime Stoppers poster contest. And as some of you in the audience may have figured out by now, that this young lady sitting in the middle there is one of our award recipients. So, I just wanna thank the board, I wanna thank the superintendent, I wanna thank the teachers, the students, and the parents for participating and supporting the Crime Stoppers poster contest. The State Attorney's Office supports it along with the Sheriff's Office. And what we do is ask students to draw a poster with the theme, "Make Your School, Your World, A Better Place." Then we pick the first, second, and third place in elementary, middle, and high school, and then for each county, there's four counties, and then we do the grand prize, which, there's a grand prize winner, three, one for each level, elementary, middle, and high school, circuit-wide. So, we're gonna recognize the Putnam County students today who participated and won, are gonna win an award. And I gotta tell you, it's the State Attorney's Office, this is one of the nice fun things we do, where folks aren't running out the door when they say that the State Attorney's Office is involved. So, we're real happy to be partners in this. We're gonna start with middle school, and we're gonna start with the third-place winner, middle school. That would be from CH Prize Middle School, 6th grade, with a $25 cash award. It's Adriana Rivera. Adriana, are you around? If we don't have Adriana or a family member here, if we've got a teacher or someone that could take it for, we'll be happy to give it to you to make sure that you get that. Second place on the middle school level, 8th grade at QI Roberts Junior Senior High, with a $50 cash award, is Peyton Fransen. I think I saw Peyton, yeah. Come on up, Peyton. And I think Peyton, is this the third or fourth time you've actually won an award? She's won it several times. And now for our first-place prize winner, and also our grand prize winner. Now, what does that mean? It means that our first-place winner gets $100 for winning first prize in Putnam County, but she also gets an additional $300 for winning the grand prize on the middle school level. So, we got a check for $400, and that's gonna go to Hannah Sharon, 7th grade, at the Putnam Academy of Arts and Science, which of course, you're not here to take it personally, but we're gonna make sure you get it. Congratulations. And Janet, if you'd just kinda show, if you could show the folks here what she, what she did to win that grand prize, it's quite impressive. I know it's hard. Now, this will go up in all the schools in the circuit. Every school in the circuit, that's four counties, we'll get this, a copy of this poster will go up in all the schools. So, you should have an opportunity to see it. There you go. There's, there it is. You see it, folks? All right. It's, this was a first. Isn't technology great? It's been a wonderful experience having you participate this way. God bless you, and you know, I hope that you have a wonderful home in Oklahoma. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you Hannah. I'm gonna, I'm gonna send this stuff out to you tomorrow, okay? As soon as you get it, your mom's gonna take a picture and send it to us, so we can put it in the paper, okay? Thank you guys for sharing. Bye.
Oh shoot, I keep forgetting, I can't see me.
Isn't that something? You know, we actually, yeah, that's great. We actually use that Skype to do depositions of witnesses sometimes as well in different, different states and different counties. Now, we're gonna go to elementary school. We're gonna start with the third-place winner from Melrose Elementary. That will be Noah Horton. Noah, where are you? All right. She's got the check. This is Noah's poster. Okay, second place, elementary, Middleton Bernie Elementary, 4th grade, Lathan Plumley. Lathan, where you at? All right. I know you can't all see it all that well, but isn't it amazing the talent these kids have? Congratulations, Lathan. All right. Let's get you right here in between us. And we got first place, 5th grade Children's Reading Center, Jordan Beverly. Jordan, where you at? And this is Jordan's poster. Congratulations. Now, we're gonna go to the high school. We'll start with third place, 11th grade Crescent City High School, Alexandra Kamitska. Alexandra. This is Alexandra's poster. Congratulations. Second place, 11th grade from Crescent City High, is Courtney Truitt. Is Courtney here?
No, but her art teacher is.
Okay, if the art teacher will come on up, please, for Courtney. This is the poster that Courtney drew. Again, quite talented. First place, from QI Roberts Junior Senior High, 10th grade, Brandon Parault. Brandon, where you at?
Great job, Brandon. All right. Step right on here in the middle. Geez, I think he's taller than me, too. Okay. Oh, you gonna want to get in there with everybody?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Brandon, will you come down here? Yeah, if you ever step out, think about two steps forward. Oh, okay, great. Adriana, okay, so you want, we're gonna give her...
Oh, did we, did we miss one?
Yeah.
Wasn't here at the time.
Who is that?
You'll go over there.
Adriana?
Adriana.
Oh, right.
Miss Adriana, there's your check. This is Adriana's poster.
She is, her hair.
Wow.
team members from Jenkins Middle School and Palaca High School.
How many speakers? Just one? Two?
It depends Rebecca, I once gave him your check.
Oh, well, that's nice.
Yeah, go to the microphone.
You're gonna call him out.
You're gonna need to stand at the podium, so they can hear.
Look at that cool shirt, that's neat.
Good afternoon, I'm Coach Bennett, archery coach from Jenkins Middle School, and I'm accompanied by Ms. Burney, the archery coach for Palaca High School. I'll let Ms. Burney go first, since her team won the state championship this year, and I'm just the second fiddle, so I'll let the high schoolers go first.
Okay, I don't have everybody here today. I have some baseball players and some football players, but I have Morgan and Kaye Chastain.
Come on up.
Shane Burwell, Lexie Lee, Gracie Prince, Kayla Hutchinson. Now, let me tell you about Kayla. Kayla was a pin shooter. One of our people backed out at the last minute, and she was in the audience, and I said, "Hey Kayla, you wanna shoot?" And she shot, "What'd you shoot?"
250.
A 250? Yeah, first time.
That's amazing.
Nathan Futch, Kestlin Hart.
Dylan Lewis.
Any more high school?
Some of the kids we're missing are Matt Sharp, Drayton Day, Curtis Moore, I'm probably gonna forget somebody, Matt Westbury, Paige Lord, Caleb Barzalona, Gavin Manzo. Gavin actually won second in state. He got, he got a scholarship. This is his second year getting a scholarship. But we had lots in the top 10, and we won state for high school and state overall. Our score was better than all the teams, so. And I know he wants me to take credit for it, but I couldn't do this without Lucas, and he's really the one that started all of this, so.
We know.
I think the majority of the kids have already won a couple of state championships, some of them three and some of them two. I took Nathan a couple years ago to Buffalo, New York, and he shot in a world championship one summer, where he ended up second. I think he also won individual state championship in Palaca, or in Florida, so there's lots and lots of winners up there already.
Is Mandy with him?
She's over there.
She's just too short to see.
She just blends in with the kids.
Okay. All right. Okay, y'all sit down, and we'll get the middle scores up.
Eat 'em all.
Thank y'all.
He's such a teacher.
This, this is the eighth year that Jenkins has been a part of the National Archery and Schools program. This year, we finished second place. The first year we were in it, we also finished second place, and the six in between, we were state champions. So, we were a little saddened by not winning, but the school that won shot really, really good, and, and we didn't do as well as we had in the past, but we still did very good. And our teams, both teams, the high school and us, are gonna travel to Louisville for the 12th or the 13th national, or 13th national championship in a row. This will be our eighth year going. And then, I'll just call you guys as I see you. Russ, Caleb...
Last names?
Oh, sorry, Russ Hurd, Caleb Bryan, Lindsey Jones, Caleb Burwell, Brandon Lewis, Nick Blundell, Mackenzie Williams, Kylie Hutchinson, Taylor Davis, Justin Sweat, Siler Prince, Jackson Lynn, having brain cramps up here, Natalie Burney, Caitlin Thompson, Samantha Harper, Miley Woods, Blake Simons, Chase Futch, Luke Sheffield, Drew Wells, Maddie Dunham, Alyssa Siverling, Blake Simons, Leighton Deloach, Jarrett Strunk. Short people up front. Some of these kids, Natalie, Caitlin, Samantha, and Siler actually go to school at CL Overturf 6th Grade Center, but because of a special rule in the, in the rulebook, they're allowed to shoot with our team, because if they're, the schools would be combined as a middle school. So, they do get to shoot with us, and they'll be attending national championship with us as well. Miley was second place in the state this year in the girls individually. And she shot the second highest score that Jenkins ever had for bullseye, so that was very, very good for Miley and the team. Yeah, Mr. Buckles is granddaughter.
Thank you, oh, he hurt you. Thank you. Now we can see those pretty faces, Blake Simons.
By the way, Mr. Buckles cannot be here today, but Miley is Mr. Buckles' granddaughter. Just wanna point that out.
Right. I'm sure he takes all the credit for her shoes.
Yeah, right.
Put it down.
Okay, we're gonna take a second break here, so I doubt they all wanna stay through the rest of the board meeting, so we'll let y'all get up and go. Hey, twins.
I was told to bring a message that the archery team wants a late, or early starting time again next year.
Everybody has their take on it.
They have to meet at 6:00 every morning to practice.
They do?
That's what they do in the high schools, or later, and they practice in the morning. My friend in Montgomery...
But you're saying they do it now, at 6:00? That's dedication.
Yeah, they have to be dedicated to do that. Yep. And it's good to let them be.
Yeah.
Memory, 23rd, we had some people lined up.
I can't believe you don't have a house. I've been getting emails and...
I've gotten two. I've got, my phone's going nuts.
Mine too.
I got...
And I don't usually get calls.
Oh, I got three. Excuse me, I forgot about candy, 'cause they're all for it.
Better.
They're all for the change.
Behave yourself, Ms...
Hey, congratulations on the...
Oh, I'm always good.
Boy, that's clear.
I know better.
Nobody knew that they called.
I think it was so confusing, very confusing.
I need to be looking at the agenda.
Wow, cleared out.
Okay, we'll continue now with our presentations. Next, we have Marcia Marinello with Keep Putnam Beautiful, and she's going to present computers obtained from electronics cleanup drive to students. Thank you. Thank you. I'm the director of Keep Putnam Beautiful, which is a local affiliate of Keep Florida Beautiful. In late March, we...
Let's make sure that mic...
Mic is her mic on.
Oh, Mike.
Are we on now?
There you are.
Yes. Okay. Okay. In late March of this year, we started an electronic recycle event. We asked citizens of Putnam County who had computers, radios, televisions, and anything electronic sitting around to please bring it to us, so that it doesn't get into the landfill. We did this in electronic recycling program in recognition of Earth Day, which was April 22nd. We joined partnerships with Staples, the Putnam County Library System, the school district, the city of Palaca, the Putnam County Sanitation Department, and the Putnam County Environmental Council, Environmental Council, in collecting and diverting from the landfill unused and unoperable electronic and digital equipment. Until this year, most of that equipment, which contains many scarce and toxic materials, would end up in the landfill and eventually contaminating the aquifer. This year, it was dropped off at the five library locations in Putnam County, and later taken on to the Keep Putnam Beautiful office, where it was looked at and determined what was still usable and what needed to go to the landfill. Equipment that could be reused was refurbished. We are presenting today our first computers to six Putnam County students, with more to come in the future. We were very grateful that this initiative was a great success. In our first year, hundreds more items were also collected, ranging from calculators to televisions, and then some. Refurbished computers will now be gifted to public school students selected by their principals and guidance counselors. Keep Putnam Beautiful hopes to make this initiative an annual event, so that we can conserve our resources, protect the environment, and improve the capability of our students. Our school district here in Putnam County spends more than $16,000 a year in recycling fees. We hope that all of our schools and personnel do their part to recycle materials at home and at school. It's a valuable lesson for our students to learn and to pass down to their own children when they get older. I want to thank our partners. I also want to thank Commissioner Rufus Borum and Timothy Kaiser, who are here today. Without them, we couldn't have gotten this done. And then, the people of Putnam County, who made this initiative a real success. With all of your continued support, we will make Putnam County not only clean, but green. I have the list of names, and if these students are here, we have the computers right here for you. You can take them home today. I have passwords for you, and you guys can get ready to go. And as time goes on, we will have more computers. We will be contacting your schools to let you know when and where to pick them up. So, I don't know if you're here, but if you are, Isel Hendriath, Nikita Williams, Jeremiah and Jonathan Bodorov, Tashae Williams, and Kimberly Privat. Yay!
Yes. I just passworded you guys, so you know how to get into this computer.
Lucas did a thing, 'cause he used to, they used to be in archery team.
Yeah, right.
Y'all are so cute.
They are.
I also wanna thank John Lockhart and Alice McGinnis from our IT department. Again, we could not have done this without them, and Dr. Neal, for helping us. In fact, we're gonna be making a video of the landfill and recycling that will go out to the community and to the schools. And again, we can't thank you enough, the school district, for your support.
Thank you, Marcia.
Thank you so much.
Hey Rufus, if they needed, they can use that back door, if that'd be easier.
We've got kids that could, if they just had the opportunity.
Elementary school kids that can do it.
Marlene, thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank y'all.
Miss Burney, thank you for...
Congratulations again, lady.
Silly girl.
Look at her hair, she got a lot of hair.
Natalie, that's me, these little girl. Well, she not little anymore. She's tall like Jack.
Now they just gotta get it. Now if we can just get them Wi-Fi.
I mean, they can use the word processor, but that's all.
Yeah, but they're supposed to be able to, if they're poor, they can get Wi-Fi.
Oh, they can?
$10, yeah.
Oh, through coffee.
I know.
They don't really check.
You mean, I could call them and say, "I need $10"?
Because we're low, where all our kids are free to do stuff.
That's why, so we're just not poor.
Yeah, but I'm not a kid.
Well, you have to have a kid.
Yeah, only students.
It's got four legs.
Okay, we're now at the public comment section of our agenda. I've only had two cards filled out. Oh, just got a third? Okay. We'll start with Minister Fay Davis, who would like to speak to us about our baccalaureate service, countywide baccalaureate service.
You know what, before I say anything else, I retired, and many of you may know, I retired several years ago. Much too early, but anyway, I retired several years ago. And I was up, been so busy, and I was, people said, well, have you, do you miss it? I'm too busy, I don't have time to miss it, and, but I wasn't busy just now.
And I'm, and I'm... That's what you miss.
And that's what I miss, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Good afternoon. I want to just take a moment to invite everyone here, school board members, on behalf of the Central Putnam Ministerial Association, which I'm a part of that, and we're having a baccalaureate service at countywide, All Seniors Matter. And it's going to be on Sunday, May twenty-first, four to five P.M. at the Ravine Gardens. Some of these flyers, I left them at the front desk up there, and we just want you guys to come out and be a part of this as well. We're going to be giving a thousand dollar scholarship to a senior.
Wow.
High school senior, not, not senior citizen.
Oh, darn.
High school senior, who will be in attendance, and the senior has to be present and must have a letter of reference from their pastor, okay? So just, I would, it would be great if you would just take the time and come out, and the time is four to five P.M., and it's on Sunday.
Oh, it's at the ravines, right.
Sunday, May twenty-first, at the Ravine Gardens. So if you're able, pencil it on your calendars, and please try to attend, we would love to have you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Fay. It's so good to see you again. Next, we'll have Annie Zvetlik and Gay Esperson from the Unitarian Universalist Church, All Souls in Palatka, to make a presentation to our backpack program. So I think we'll have Ms. Cummings accept that. Well, hey, Cora, be glad to have you. If y'all will step to the microphone.
Good afternoon, my name is Gay Esperson, I'm the chair of the board of All Souls Unitarian Universalist Congregation in Putnam County, and we are a small church, but we, when we formed about a little over ten years ago, we decided we would give ten percent, we would tithe to the community, and every quarter, we pick another charity that we give our tithe to, and this quarter was the backpack program that Nikki's been promoting, for food for kids in the summer.
Nikki, you go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Wonderful. Thank you, Annie. Thank you, Gay.
Thank you.
How much was the donation?
Four hundred and forty-six dollars.
It was four hu- four hundred and forty-six dollars. Thank you so much. Next, we have Glenda Lynn, who will speak about school start time. If you'll say your name and address into the microphone.
Good afternoon, my name is Glenda Lynn, one eleven Myrtlewood Point Road, East Palatka. Today, I'd just like to address the board and ask you, I had the opportunity to read the announcement about school start time proposals that'll be discussed today, and I would like to ask you to consider how the wor- how that may impact the working parent and their ability to, A, get their older children to school, if for whatever reason they don't ride a school bus, also how that will impact our older students who participate in sports. They already get home at a really late hour, so now if we have a sports start time that can't start until after X time, which is going to be an hour and twenty minutes later than it is today, how that will impact them coming home late in the evenings, and if we have students who are driving. I have friends and family in St. John's County who also have this similar start time, and they do face varying difficulties with the start time. While I understand the studies, and I understand what the University of Kentucky, or, excuse me, Connecticut, has to say about it, it doesn't, that doesn't necessarily show the overall impact of how it impacts family dynamics, how it impacts the things that happen in the school. For example, that archery team meets at six A.M., that would change, you know, if they're going to meet after school, now they're waiting till five P.M. Can children make it to church on time, right? Can they make it to church on time that starts at five, if I'm not picking them up till five? So there's just a lot of things that are going to be impacted. I also noticed that there's also a challenge with buses, and we'll have to increase the parameter around schools to be two miles versus one mile. Do you want your child walking that far? Is that necessarily appropriate through some of our communities? So there's just a lot of things I think there need to be thought through, and perhaps discussion groups with parents before we make this decision that would impact the community tremendously. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on now to the consent agenda. Ms. Jorgensen, do you need to pull anything?
No, ma'am. Ms. Cummings? No. Ms. Gilliard? No, ma'am.
And neither do I.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, now we need to go out of regular session into emergency session. We have two items that we need to consider. We're Jay on the agenda. The two, the first item... Okay, so do I do this additional information yet?
That was just in case a board member didn't have it.
Oh, okay, okay. The first emergency item is pertaining to Mellon Elementary School employees. Justification, explanation, original approval on October twenty-first, twenty sixteen, but timeline has changed.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is approved. The second one is the overnight trip for the Palatka High School track team to attend FHSAA state track championships. Justification, explanation. It is presented as an emergency, as team members advanced in recent competition.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll go back into regular session. Next, we have discussion of unfinished business, and we have none, so we'll move on to discussion, input and action for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school opening and closing times. Do we have someone who is Tanya Whitehurst?
So to begin with, we want to just show a quick video that really has a lot of the research that is available. I just hit the wrong one. Sorry, Mike.
We've known for a long time that adolescents do a very poor job early in the morning. We have ignored that research for the convenience of the adults.
We know that insufficient sleep increases the risk of obesity. It increases the risk of type two diabetes, and it increases the risk of downstream cardiovascular. It's like a blood pressure.
If you talk to any pediatrician, you talk to any public health official, you talk to any sleep researcher, and they will rattle off a long laundry list of the things that sleep does for the human body and the horrible effects that occur to people who don't get enough sleep.
Car crashes decrease up to seventy percent for just one hour in a shift in the bell start times. One less hour of weekday sleep is associated with significantly greater odds of suicide attempts and seriously considered suicide.
Isn't being a teenager difficult to go without stacking the odds against our children or shortchanging them on the most important resources they need for strong mental and physical health? My grades right now? First grade, I have a C. Throughs two to nine, straight A's.
Doctor pushes them every day to get out of bed.
Today, I witnessed a kid in my third period fall asleep on his desk while the teacher was talking to everybody.
People are asleep in class all the time.
This was a problem that affected everyone. It didn't just affect the students, it affected the teachers, and thus the entire class was affected.
No matter how great your teachers, no matter how much fun they try to make it, if you're tired, you're not going to learn anything. During the class that I filmed of my AP assistant teacher, and he worked so hard to make school fun and to do attractive activities, but every single class, first period, probably about half the class was asleep.
We have very strong research demonstrating that high school kids learning is negatively affected by studying before they're awake in the morning. There's lots of research, and again, sort of common sense, that a lot of teens, you know, struggle to get up at six in the morning to get up and walk. We need policymakers and practitioners to pay attention first to the research that we already have.
If we don't have our physical and mental health in check, the education the county provides us really has little meaning. Later school start times and middle school bell times can produce results of benefit to the entire community.
This is something that we can fix, that we can change. Grades improve, standardized test scores improve, that attendance goes up, our graduation rates go up, and every day when you fail to make a decision about this, there's a cost attached to it, and it's a cost to our children.
So I'm going to give you three more pieces of information, and some of the information that was in that video that's from the American Psychological Association is in this. This is, this is different. What you have already is the chronic absenteeism study that we did here in Putnam County. This is some more research from across the nation, and there's three different pieces here.
Is that McKeever report in there?
No, ma'am, I emailed the McKeever report to you.
Okay, yeah, I got that.
So, yes. But I just want to point a couple of things out, and then we actually have some principals here that are going to speak. When, when we had the, the study, the report of the chronic absenteeism study that we did when we got the results last week, this just really came to light. It's something that has been talked about for years. I remember being an assistant principal at Interlocken High School with Suzanne Mathie, and we pushed at that time to just allow West Putnam to, let's, let's, let us be the pilot out there and try it. So, so there, I don't want to take anything away from them, I just want to point out a couple of things that's in the packets that I just gave you, and the one that is titled "Later School Start Times Promote Adolescent Well-Being," it really talks about the biological and psychological roots in adolescents that their brains just do not shut down until later at night. And so saying, well, they just need to go to bed earlier, they can't just go to bed earlier. It's the, and, and there's biological and psychological reasons for that, but they still need eight to ten hours of sleep. And so I just think that's something that we really need to consider, but in this, it really talks about some of the benefits that they have observed from later high school start times. Increased attendance rates, decrease in disciplinary action, decrease in student-involved car accidents, increase in student GPA, increase in state assessment scores, increase in college admission test scores, increase in student attention, decrease in students sleeping during instruction, increase in quality of student-family interaction. So that's just a few things just from that. So there's so much information in here in the report from Science Daily. It just says that, let me get to the sentence, "Many people believe that school start times are one of the big reasons students do not get enough sleep. A CDC study found that eighty-five point six percent of U.S. high schools started before eight-thirty, which is the earliest time recommended by the American Academy of Pediatrics." I mean, they recommend that it should not start before eight-thirty. So that's just some information that I wanted to present. You have the chronic absenteeism report, school by school, as well as the county, and any of the principals that are here that want to come up and speak on your behalf. Yeah, they're all like grinning at me.
Got to have a buddy to come up here.
Good afternoon, good afternoon. Jothia Bold, Middleton Bernie Elementary School. First off, I want to say that, that we, we kind of talked about this as a group at a principals' meeting, and, and there wasn't a dissenting voice at the time, and I don't know that there is one amongst principals right now, because we have to kind of keep the focus on what we do. Schools are academic institutions. We have a lot of research that tells us that it's an academic bonus to have our older students starting a little bit later. There are other things to take into consideration. Student safety is one of the things that's been brought up, and I'll tell you, this morning, driving down to Middleton Bernie, I passed middle schoolers on the side of the road in the dark at, gosh, it was probably about six-thirty-five, waiting for a bus. And that's not safe for middle schoolers, it's not safe for high schoolers, it's not safe for little children. And the more I think about it, the more I think that it's more likely for me as a parent to send my fifteen-year-old down to a dark, empty bus stop than it is for me to send my eight-year-old. It's not going to happen. Probably not my fifteen-year-old either, but what I guess I'm trying to say is, I think that it would encourage more safe behavior to begin with, just that we go down and supervise our children at the bus stops. Not just the little children, that's exactly right. Also, as a parent, I know that my six-year-old wakes up raring to go, six-thirty, she is ready to do something, welcoming the day, and that's because we're letting her stay a little bit later up. But I think it, the benefits definitely outweigh any of the problems. Now, I also have a unique perspective, because I've been at schools where, oh, gosh, a little background. We're also talking about adding some time to the school day. I'm very much in favor of that, not just because we need the extra academic time, but the fact is, we need recess time in our schools, in elementary schools. I'm very passionate about teaching students social-emotional skills. Their opportunity to practice social-emotional skills is on the playground, unstructured play, not P.E., not where there are rules, but where there's unstructured play, where they have to figure it out on their own. And I believe that having some extra time will help that. Having been at a school where there was extra time, out at Aquila, and starting late, we started at nine-fifteen, and our students didn't get out until almost four o'clock, that last little piece of the day wasn't very effectively used. I heard a lot of parents complaining about the extra time because their little children got home very late. So it's not so much that our kids are at school too long, it's that our kids are getting home too late. This solves that problem too, and it gives us that extra little piece of time. Having been at both of those schools though, I'm sorry, I didn't finish that thought. Having been at Aquila and then at Mellon, where we had an extended day because we were a bottom-three-hundred school, we had the extra time, and we started early. Out at Aquila, we started late, it wasn't as effective. But at Mellon Elementary, with the added time that nobody else had, excuse me, other than Mosley, we had an opportunity to have math interventions at the end of the day, so that's between one-fifty-five and two-fifteen, and we were actually getting work done at the end of the day. At a late school, between three-twenty-five and three-forty-five, the, the cognitive levels of a seven-year-old at that point aren't exactly optimal for learning. And so I think that if we, if we're really trying to make the best choice as an academic institution, and, and see this as, as part of our vision and moving forward as a district, I think this is a great opportunity for us. We will all have to make changes. My wife at home told me, that doesn't work in my schedule, as far as getting up earlier and getting the kid to school earlier, and I told her, just like everybody... And I told her, just like everybody else, we'll have to make adjustments. And they won't be easy, but we'll manage and we will make those adjustments. But in the meantime, what we have are students', little children, who aren't supervised at home, their parents are at work and their older siblings are already at school. And so if we're starting at nine o'clock, we still have that unsupervised time for our little children. There are problems that we'll have to solve, but I think this is a wonderful opportunity for us. I'll stop blathering on.
Thank you, Jo.
Good afternoon. Ashley McCullough, Browning Pierce Elementary. I've had the unique opportunity, having been admin at Crescent City High, Beasley, Mosley, and now at Browning Pierce. So I've seen our high school students at Crescent City get dropped off of a bus at 6:30, often when they work late hours the night before in fields, having gotten on the bus before six and it be dark. I've witnessed at Mosley and here at Browning Pierce this year, parents who are trying to go to work that can't afford morning daycare drop their kids off before I'm supposed to supervise children. So we have about right now at Browning Pierce anywhere from fifty to sixty kids who come in the morning before eight o'clock. I'm not supposed to supervise until 8:30. So most of us principals spend the first half of the year standing out there fussing at parents, which is kind of ridiculous because they have jobs to do and they see adults here and don't understand our rules. And so we've made a way to put them in computer labs early in the morning because, believe me when I say, when kids are up at 7:30, they're ready to go. And you get about four good hours out of them in the morning. The way it is now, where we start around nine and have to run lunches at about 10:45, we really only get for some of our kids about two good hours before lunch. So I've definitely seen the benefits of trying it. It seems silly that we don't give it an effort for a couple of years and look at our own kids, most other districts around the area. My own two children start later. It doesn't affect sports in that around the state, they aren't changing the times of sports events. Varsity sports, he's a basketball player, start at 7:30 whether you went to school at nine or 7:30 in the morning, which means he's not getting home till midnight and he's in an IB program. So he can do his work after practice in the evenings and he can clock another seven hours of sleep. I have another son who works. We have a lot of students in our community who work to help provide for their families and most restaurants do not close up until after nine or 10. If they have any studying to do, it gives them an opportunity to get some sleep. So it does seem silly to me that we don't at least give it an effort. We can always readdress it in a couple of years if it doesn't work out. But I've not seen a district yet, from anything I'm reading and people I'm talking to, that have gone back after they've tried it. So anyway, appreciate your support. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good evening, good afternoon. My name is Brian Helms. I'm the principal at Interlaken High School. So I'm just coming to you very quick, very simple. At a high school, we do a variety of things. And I'm going to talk to you mainly about absences that we have at our school. And you guys have seen the report. Our school right now sits about thirty-four percent, which means about two hundred and forty kids have at least nineteen absences or more. And I have about sixty-seven kids that have thirty-plus absences. And we do a variety of things to motivate students to get to school and to get there on time. But the bottom line is about eighty percent of my school rides the bus. So if they miss the bus, they don't come to school. And it's, no matter how much I offer them, they're not going to come to school if they miss the bus because there's nobody at home to take them, there's nobody at home to get them there. And so when I look at giving the kids extended time to sleep, this is something that we need to try. I think the data shows and the research shows that this is better for them as individuals. My other thing that I have is, for me, when I get to the buses at 7:10, because our students get off the bus at 7:10 every morning, those buses are waiting on me at 7:10 in the morning. And when those kids get off, I have a very good relations with a lot of my students. And normally, they don't speak to me in the morning, which I understand, I'm not a morning person either. So, but by second period, they're speaking to me and they're active. And so without the research, just looking at the students themselves every day in the trenches where we are, we see second periods better than first period. Just bottom line, just from observing them. And for me, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over, inspecting a different outcome. So if we don't do something to change, we can look at the eight counties that are around us that start at 9:15 and they do great things and they're eight counties, there's a reason. And this might be something. Now, the thirty-four percent, I don't see going away right away. It's going to take time, but it might drop it to twenty, which is a lot of kids we're affecting. And so I just, as a principal of a high school, my recommendation is to go to that later time. And it is up to you guys, but I just appreciate your time and effort that you guys do every day because I wouldn't want your job for all King Midas's money. So I commend you guys very much, but thank you again so much for your time and thank you, guys.
Thank you, Brian.
JT Stout, principal of Palaca High School. As you saw in the report, thirty-five percent of Putnam County's high school students are chronically absent, so they've missed ten percent or more, nineteen days or more. At Palaca High, I think it's right at thirty-nine percent. We're sitting at that. Tardies and absences are an issue. Dealt with a young lady today who lost her driver's license due to tardies and absences. And we had to explain to the parent that the twenty-eight tardies that she has results in nine more absences in addition to what she already missed. And that's why now she's looking at not having her driver's license back until September because we don't have enough school for her to be here enough to get it back. So that later start time would happen. When you look at Palaca High School's chronic absenteeism report and question three, what would help you come to school more? The underlying theme is coming to school later. Now, with that being said, we did a survey and I'm not going to not let the students and teachers' voices be heard because I did do the survey Friday, so to be transparent, I asked how many would like to have the later time, how many wouldn't like to have the later time. And out of all the responses, fifty-one teachers said no, five said yes, and six hundred eighty students said no, seventy said yes. So ninety percent of the students said no, they wouldn't want the later time. My interpretation of that is those are the ninety that are going to be there whether we start at nine or we start at 7:40. It's the thirty-nine percent that are chronically absent and tardy that we're having the issue with. And if that means, just like Brian said, we could cut that percentage down in half by starting at a later time, that's fine. I know if my athletic director watches this later, he's not going to be happy with me. We had a good conversation today. And I understand where the sports are coming from. But as an academic institution, that's my first priority. And if this will improve our academics, then we need to give it a shot. And having a nine-year-old myself on Saturday mornings at 6:30 when she's up and ready to go and wants daddy to make pancakes, she can go to school at 7:40.
Thank you, JT.
I'm Michelle Higginbotham, principal at Crescent City High School. I basically concur with everything that's been said here today. I did hand all of you some research and some articles in the red folder that you had on your desk waiting on you that kind of also mirrors a lot of what we heard on the video clip. Also to think about, in addition to what we've already heard, with my school, I can give you the stats basically for what our average day of absences is right now. We're averaging about seventy students out and I'm around four hundred and fifty-eight enrollment. That's about fifteen percent. However, my tardies, and I am the earliest starting school in the district, I begin our day at 7:20, my students get out at 1:55. They go for seven periods a day. I walk in classrooms all the time, constantly waking up students. I ask them, "Why are you sleeping?" "I'm tired, miss. I'm tired, miss." "Okay, go wash your face, come back in and get to work." We're testing these students at 7:30, eight o'clock in the morning. They're falling asleep on a regular day when they're able to collaborate with their partners, when they're able to talk, when they even have brain breaks and can get up and move in between periods. But when we sit them down for a standardized test, they can't do any of that. So if we continue, as JT said, or I'm sorry, Brian said, to continue in the same path, we're just creating insanity again. As I said, my average attendance, seventy kids out out of four hundred and fifty-eight. My tardies, I average about forty-five, and it's getting closer to about fifty-five now with the fourth nine weeks of kids coming in late. I stand up there every morning, ask them, "Why are you late?" "I overslept. I'm tired." "Okay, I missed the bus." Which, in my chronic absenteeism report, and you will see that broken down by my school, that's the reason for my students that completed that chronic absenteeism survey. Eighty-eight percent was transportation issues. And it's because a lot of my parents do work in the fields and they are not there. They share vehicles, they might only have one. So if that student does miss it, and they may live out in Georgetown, Lake Como, they're not going to walk, so they miss. Just this week, we had a student that is a senior. We are working with her, she's kind of fallen between the cracks, to try to get her identified for some support through students with disabilities. She was late on Monday. She woke up. My secretary went and picked her up. They were going to begin the testing that day. And she's a senior. Yesterday, they were going to complete the test. Again, she was late. I think my dean had to go pick her up yesterday. So if we're going to continue down this road, then we need to be able to say, "Yeah, we did it, but we did it for maybe the wrong reasons. But it's time we stop looking at that and do something for the right reasons. And our kids are worth it. Our academics are worth it." And like Ashley said, why not try it? It's not going to hurt anything. How can we expect to rise to number thirty-four in the state when we're not going to do things to change it?
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Mary Piazza, QI, Roberts. And I make the fourth of the four high school principals that is advocating for the later start time. And for me, it's very simple. It's two issues. At QI, we're very driven by data and research, and this research is very clear that it would help. And just from a practical point of view, we start at 7:40. And because of our remote location and the bus ride, students have to get up 5:30. It's just so early. It is. And we have a lot of problems with tardies, especially during first period. So we think this would help. So we hope you will think about our reasons that we've advocated for.
Thank you, Mary.
So I just want to finish with this part of it, just with one quote from the article from Science Daily. And when I read this, I was just like, yeah, this is exactly what we need to focus on. "Our nation's future is literally dependent upon the physical, mental, and educational excellence of our high school students. The most recent national surveys show that less than one-third of our high school students get enough sleep as recommended by the leading national authorities. This is of concern since inadequate sleep has been linked to worsened mental health, decreased ability to learn, increased obesity rates, increased motor vehicle accidents, and even increased substance abuse."
Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you, Tanya.
Would any of you board members like to have some input?
I'd ask Rodney for something.
That's what I wanted to hear from.
I had, I just, I'd been talking to bus drivers about some things and I said, "Could you do a quick survey?" Because my concern, of course, is safety. And several of them said, "Wow, we have, especially in South Putnam, my district, they, the majority of the older siblings get the younger children off the bus." They told me seventy-five percent of that. And so I was like, they just couldn't believe, well, who's going to get the kids off the bus? I said, so I asked him just to do a quick survey if that was something that was, he was able to help out with.
I sent two questions out to the bus drivers at all three areas. The first one was, when you go to bus stops, do you have parents, siblings, or both? In Crescent City, out of the fourteen reports, twelve of them say that both parents and siblings are there. And then one person said just siblings. So you're looking at thirteen out of fourteen. And then this, Palaca, there were eleven out of twenty that says both siblings and parents are there at the bus stops. And in Interlaken, there were seventeen out of twenty-three that said both and then two just said that other siblings are there. The second question was, if a sibling is at the bus stop, what percentage of the time are they there? Twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five, and a hundred? In Crescent City, two said twenty-five percent, five said fifty percent, six said seventy-five percent, one said a hundred percent. In Palaca, seven was at twenty-five percent, four at fifty percent, one at seventy-five percent. And in Interlaken, six had twenty-five percent, seven had fifty percent, five had seventy-five percent, and one had a hundred percent. So if you look at that, there are siblings that are there, but I'm not sure if the percentage is great enough to warrant that, you know, parents expect older siblings to be at the bus stop to take care of their kids overall. But that's the two questions. Right.
Right, okay.
Mr. Simons, if we were to go with this flip-flop on the times.
Yes.
You know, it would seem that it would work out for the bus schedule and routes and drivers. Will it, will it cause more problems, less problems, or just the same old problems?
Hopefully it wouldn't cause any more problems. We could have the same problems when you're looking at the number of people. Actually, in some situations, we've looked at getting the two other elementary schools that have had different start times back in line with the other ones. We have some drivers that just drive secondary based on the length of the route. If we go to elementary first, we would be able to use them on a short elementary run before they have to go out to do the secondary run. That would help us out both morning and afternoon because the longer run for secondary is in the afternoon at second, so they've got plenty of time between runs, they've got plenty of time after that. We'll still have the issue with athletics and trying to cover routes. It doesn't matter who goes first, when you start, so we'll still have those issues. Hopefully, we can get additional subs. I know here in the past few weeks, we have had several people that are interested, so hopefully we will make some progress and be in a good situation when school starts. So that's a positive.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd like to comment.
Is it time? Yes.
Change is so difficult. It really is. And I think that's one of the things we hesitate to do here in Putnam County. And yet, we need to change, folks. I mean, really, everything's changing and we need to change. I raised four kids and I agree, the young ones are up and raring to go early in the morning and the older ones want to stay up late and want to sleep later. So to me, it's, without even looking at these, it's common sense that we send the older kids later and the younger kids earlier. I know it's going to upset a lot of, a lot of parents because they're going to have to change too. They're going to have to make other arrangements. But it's almost going to be like, I'm thinking, if I had kids in elementary school and all of a su- it's almost going to be like you're calling your friends and things will happen together. People work things out together. We're about educating kids, period, period. That's all we're supposed to- sorry, but now my sports and church on Wednesday and impacting working parents, those are the three big reasons I've heard not to do this. And I just, none of those reasons is good enough to me to not do it, to not try it, anyway.
And the research that I received from some that called me, I really appreciate that. You know who you are, plus I Googled myself. And the research that I read supports what the principals are saying. And I too am concerned about the education of our children. This is one of the things that our superintendent ran on. And not only that, this is what we should be concerned about as citizens in order to make changes in our district, to educate our children, to give them the best opportunities possible. And anytime the ones that are in the trenches, like these principals, have come to us and said, "We are willing to do what it takes to make our scores better, to help our children to receive the rest and do the things that they need to do." Whenever they're bold enough to step out and to look at those reasons, we want to go for that because we pledged our parents to give our children the best education possible. And if the older ones are asleep and if we can get that extra hour where they're sleeping and they come to class, and the research is supporting that, it does affect the home. The children aren't as grouchy as they are. So I concur with Ashley, as she said, let's give it a try and let's work together as a community to make it happen. And we understand our parents are working and we understand how people perceive our district as being poor, whatever. But we can make this change and pull it together. And that's what I say.
Thank you, Ms. Gilliard. Ms. Cunnings?
Although I'm not going to ever say the research is wrong. I mean, what teenager wouldn't say they're more productive with a little more sleep? Although ninety percent of the high school kids didn't want the time change, that's- Although ninety percent of the high school kids didn't want the time change, that's surprising.
At one school.
But if you look at the responses, and this is really what I looked at, the, all the, all the surveys and all the things, if, if all of the recommendations that we got from these great reports of our county, they don't say change the time to earlier. They say establish district and school attendance goals, share with all stakeholders, do data collection, change these things. So, there's a lot of things that, that I felt, I spent a lot of time looking through the research. And the thing that was the most interesting to me, and I don't know, Superintendent, if you, I know this is a goal, but when you look at the open-ended responses, are there other reasons listed that you missed school? And it's such, at IHS, two out of forty-three said, I sleep in. Two out of forty-three. That's not even one percent. So, I guess I'm just saying, I understand research, but I'm looking at our local research. And I mean, we spend a lot of time and energy, I mean, I know that you looked at all these reports. What would help you come to school more at Palacka High? On question three, eight of seventy, so right over ten percent said, one wasn't, as I'd say, go to sleep earlier, I wouldn't say that would be affected, but start later. So, out of seventy responses, eight. So, I'm not convinced that starting later, because if you look at the responses, I talked to Judge Christiansen, who is very, very expert in this, in everything, truancy judge, sees these people all the time. I said, do you feel that there, this is going to affect? You want to lower truancy, correct? Is that the goal, or is it graduation rate? What's the goal?
Both.
Oh, thanks.
Okay. So, we want to increase graduation rate, and we want to lower truancy.
Mm-hmm.
So, I said, do you see, and she says, there is absolutely no evidence of any correlation by changing start times. That was her opinion. And I, I respect her opinion. She's very, very educated, very, and sees it a lot. So, she just encouraged me to, you know, focus on the importance of school and attendance and how, she like, well, I'll tell you the thing that works the most, when I've thrown, you know, the, the, the parents of the high school kids that I can't do anything with them, when I throw them in jail, they don't come back. And I was like, well, yeah, that would be, you know, wonderful if we could do that with our chronic truant, you know, parents often. But I guess the thing is that these responses at Crescent City, I mean, I looked at them a long, so again, IHS, are there other reasons that you listed that you missed school? Two out of forty-three say, I like to sleep, and I sleep in. So, I guess when we're making this big of a decision, it's, I look at the data. This is all data. This is not opinions. This is all data. I talked to the bus drivers, and again, seventy-five percent of them. But these, these, these documents that we spend in these recommendations out of one, two, they gave us great ideas. I mean, they're saying, these are the recommendations that we want you to, the common student barriers towards improving attendance. And really, I mean, none of them really, they just talk about recognition of good and improved attendance. One other thing that really bothers me, we're not doing the automated call, and we're not letting teacher, parents know at several of the schools. They don't get a call. When those kids don't show up, we're not using that, and that's a shame. That is a downright shame.
That's ridiculous.
And some of them do, but they don't, it doesn't happen on a, unfortunately.
All those schools, raise their hands, y'all were doing that, right? Yeah.
Right. So, there's not, it's just not consistent to where the parents get a call, for whatever reason, maybe it's not documented, and that bothers me, because then the parents don't even know it's an issue, because they're not getting a call. Whether or not it's a system, I mean, it's something that has to be done more, communicating with parents. Because if you look at all these recommendations, they all say, your stakeholders have to be involved with this. Your stakeholders have to have attendance goals. And I have not had my phone quit ringing, and they all, I've, I've not had one person, they said, I mean, it's just accountability, and it's family involvement, parent involvement. They're all saying, you know, we need more of that. And honestly, when you look, when you look at these questions about what would help you come to school more, food was better, more activities, I hate school, my teachers are mean. I mean, you know, you, you look at high schools, and you take it with a grain of salt.
Things you can't change.
Right, exactly. There's a lot you can't change, but the minority, the, the least answer is start school later. If you really spend time looking at, these are the kids we're targeting. And if they honestly answered these correctly.
Really?
This is the thing that, you know, I'm like, well, we're asking the kids, that's what I'm saying. So, I mean, I'm not going to vote for it. I know that the board's saying, hey, let's try research. Research, great, but I don't think, unfortunately, it's some kind of magic bullet that are, I mean, hey, we'll give it a try. But my thing, my vote is dependent upon safety and the number of parents that are so upset about, and honestly, they're going to have those kids sit alone at home.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to ask our community, ask our parents, because it does take a village, and our parents are going to have to really.
Step up to the plate.
Step up, and, and they are doing a lot, but we're going to ask them, kind of like Kathy said, they're going to have to change their routine. And like Joe said, who's going to send their child to sit at the bus stop by themselves? I mean, we need to protect our kids. And nobody wants a child to sit in the dark at the bus stop by themselves. So, we're going to have to ask the parents to really work with us on that, to make it work.
Nikki, what I'm hearing you say is that, there's all this other research that we've presented, presented with, but you're going to ignore that and do what the kids want, or the kids say.
No, no, no. I'm looking at the, okay, we did a survey that actually, the reasons for chronic absenteeism, and in the last, they make recommendations, if you look through those.
The students.
No, 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 no. This is the actual USF DOE, open, not, I'm not talking about open-ended, I'm talking about the recommendations.
Right.
These recommendations are not from the students. I was reading the open-ended questions, but I was actually looking at, work with, like, they actually work with stakeholders to establish alternative transportation options, such as carpool, bus passes, late bus. Consider ways to use automated courses.
That's what they'll be doing.
That's what their parents will have to do.
Right, right. And these are all things that the recommendations to, from, the intervention that was the project.
Okay, Tanya would like to address.
First of all, I just want to kind of explain the study, so that there's not any misunderstanding of what you have in front of you, okay? This was a study that was done, we asked, students took the survey in our secondary schools, with the exception of QI Roberts, and it was targeting students who were chronically absent during the fifteen, sixteen school year. And they took it November, December of this past, of this school year. And the first part of that survey was a lot of, like, multiple-choice type answers. And if you will look at the Putnam County overall results, that was the first one that I had emailed, on page four, it lists the top five reasons as to why they do not come to school. And the fourth one is the school schedule stating later start time, shorter classes, more time to pass between classes. All of the students did not answer an open-ended, it was, the open-ended piece was not required. The multiple-choice part was required.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay? And, and I just want to, I just want to say that I don't think anyone is standing here saying that the only reason we're asking for secondary to start late is because of attendance. It's one piece of a big puzzle that we are trying to put together and make it successful. And attendance is just one piece of that, that will have an impact. It's not going to solve the complete attendance issue. We understand that. There's, it's so much deeper than that. But that, we're requesting that, because there's so much more that's at stake than just attendance.
What do you, like, I mean, what are your other, what are your goals? He said, I mean, Dr. Surrance, he said, graduation rate and absentee.
Graduation rate will increase when students are alert and awake in class, and they can actually learn and pay attention to the instruction that is happening.
Score tests will improve.
School, right.
Score tests.
School, right, yeah, great.
If, if you look at that research that I have, that we've given you.
Not necessarily for absenteeism.
That's one, that's one benefit that we are hoping that we will get to see as a, as a result of this. We are not, that was not the whole, this has been talked about for years before we ever did the absentee study.
Right. Of course, it's the same old problem.
We talked about this in the nineties.
Okay. I, I would like to say something, too.
Oh, you, you don't get to say.
And what Kathy just mentioned, I mean, we talked about later, later start times for high school students in the nineties, and it's something that I've always been interested in. This research is not new. This research has been there for a long time, but we've never done it. And now, you know, I think now is the time. I've gotten only four phone calls. I've gotten a couple of emails. But two of those phone calls were in favor of changing the start times for our high school students and middle school students to start later, and our younger ones to start earlier, so they could participate in dance and after-school activities, softball practice, you know? And I've got one friend, she's about to beat me up over it. But that's not the only reason. There's, there's just, I worked in a high school for thirty-two years, and I taught English, which I know is not the most interesting subject to a lot of kids, but they don't get enough sleep. And they are going to sleep in English, and it doesn't matter if I pour cold water on them, or tickle them, or kiss them on the head, that they're going to sleep. And I, I resorted to all of, I sang to them.
Oh, Lord.
Yeah, that was pretty bad. But I want to say something, as far as parents being inconvenienced. Parents are always inconvenienced, and, and it's hard to change. But let me give you my example, because I was inconvenienced, but I had to do what was best for my child. And she had to get up at five fifteen with her mom every day for eight years to get on a school bus that drove her to St. Augustine, to Florida School for the Deaf and Blind, to attend school. She was very young. Yeah, maybe she caught a nap on the bus, but she went to school all day, participated in sports after school, sometimes didn't get home till five-thirty, six-thirty on the bus. Or if she participated in a game, I went to the game, and we didn't get home until eleven at night, most nights of the week. You do what is best for your children, and if you are inconvenienced, I'm sorry. I would also like to say that people complain about education in Putnam County all of the time. Parents complain about it. That school stinks. Those teachers are not good. But when we, as a county, want to do something to try to increase the graduation rates or improve education in Putnam County, they're the first to complain. I'm sorry if you're going to be inconvenienced. We all experience inconvenience. I, too, am concerned about safety for our, our children, our young ones, but you know what? We'll find a way. Those parents will find a way. If they have to take a week at a time and say, I'll stay with them this week at the bus stop till it gets here, you do it next week. We will find a way.
And that's all I have to say on the subject. I'm ready to make a motion.
Do it.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the open and closing times for schools marked D, with the elementary schools going early and the secondary schools going later.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Yes.
Three to one. Okay, now it's time for board reports. And Ms. Gilliard, I'm starting with you.
Okay.
I didn't warn you, but.
Oh, I'm, I'm ready.
Okay.
I had the opportunity of serving as a proctor for Miller Middle School for three days last week. And if that's an indication of how well our students are doing in the district, we're going to do okay, because we only had one, like some, one of the principals mentioned, had to get the water on the face to kind of wake them up. But the students were there, they were excited, the teachers looked excited, and, and they were remembering what they were, you know, supposed to do. So, I had a great time doing that. That's it.
Well, I know they were appreciative of you being there, proctor, and that's not a fun job.
Oh, I enjoyed mine. I had Mr. Frazee, he, you know, he's cool.
Because you can't do anything else.
He started them off with the song and stuff, and, and you can't read. I had my book that you bought me. They said I had to leave it.
I know.
Couldn't take it. You know? But the kids were really, I mean, they were geared up.
They were ready to take the test.
They gave me their cell phones, and that's like a part of them, you know, their heart or lung or something you're asking for. And they gave them to me, and I put them in a big basket, and they were cool. So, it was great. I, I enjoyed myself.
Okay. Nikki?
A lot of great activities at the end of the year. We have our race coming up, May thirteenth, Feed the Need. Please join us, it's a great event. We have so many kid runners. I'm so proud of all these kids.
Do you have to run?
No, you can walk.
She said we could walk.
You can fun run, you can do a mile, you can bicycle, you can ride a scooter, whatever you want. So, it is a great event. We raise a lot of money, and I appreciate that. So, looking forward to that. As far as the school start times, I am hopeful that this is going to change things. I am hopeful that we can say next year, wow, look at the change.
I mean, we may have to give it more than a year.
Well, it's just, and again, it's just, the kids that I see every day, the kids I help, I just, I'm really concerned about their safety in going home, because unfortunately, they'll, they'll be home alone, and that's just the reality. And I see it a lot, because I deliver food to these families that have four and five kids, and the oldest sibling is there by themselves till mama gets home. And anyway, it's, it's going to be a concern of mine, and it is what it is, but I just hope it's in the best interest of the safety of the kids. Again, I, I hope parents do, I hope that we track it. I hope that we do all the other recommendations in this, because honestly, when you read this chronic absenteeism report, there's a lot of issues why kids don't like school. And I'm, I'm hoping, and wow, I mean, there's a lot of things going on with these students that I hope that we can address on a level that would be more emotionally, academically, physically addressing, because there's some serious issues that these kids, if you read these things and say that's, you know, and I know the superintendent's read it, so again, we want to look at data. If you look at data, there's a lot of work to be done, so I just hope that we can get on the right path for that.
Ms. Jorgensen?
Well, it's been a long time coming, but we've changed the school hours. Something I've wanted to do for twenty-something years. But anyway, I am now on a committee, St. John's River State College, Adult Ed. Diane Reeves was serving on it, and she asked me to take her place.
Be working with Dr. Perry.
Mm-hmm. And the federal government now is coming down, and Adult Ed is no more just a GED or even a high school diploma. That's supposed to be the beginning. They're all supposed to incorporate employability skills, goal-setting, career choices, and all that. So, it sounds really good. I'm excited about what our students, some of our students, will have on the GED and Adult Ed plane coming up. Code of Conduct, we passed today on the consent agenda. And is Mr. Weaver here? Yeah, we had a committee meeting, and we talked about it and agreed that we need more committee meetings. The Code of Conduct kind of went through the way it is, but we're talking about Closing Solutions Center to save money, and because it's not working effectively. But there's some, we have to, what are we going to do in lieu of expulsion, if anything? So, we have to, I mean, I would ask the chairwoman to appoint a committee, a Code of Conduct or Discipline Committee that would meet regularly and deal with the whole ball of wax, because we had deans from, from several of our schools involved in this committee report, and there's some really wonderful ideas coming out of that. But it takes time and more meetings. And I know it sounds silly, oh, meetings, 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 but they're productive.
Would you like to be on that committee?
I would very much like to sit on that committee. Thank you.
Okay.
And the last, but not least, is we're having another workshop on Tuesday, and I would request that the seating be different than it was at our last workshop. A big square table would be good, or us sitting up here, so we can see each other and talk to each other. But it didn't work out too good last time. Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Well, I've got a busy couple of weeks coming up. Next week, I'm going to Kentucky with the archery team. I'm very excited about that. I'm supposed to be a chaperone. I found out today, I may have to be a relief driver. I'm not very excited about that. Again, Kathy just mentioned, we have a board workshop next Tuesday, and remember that it's at nine AM this week.
I don't get up at noon.
Well, you're going to have to. Well, you're gonna have to.
What?
Nine AM.
Nine AM?
Nine AM. That's like, you're a senior, you can get up and get somewhere by nine for our budget meeting.
Next Tuesday, a budget workshop at nine AM.
Next Tuesday? Yes. You didn't get that memo?
No, I didn't.
Okay, and then, um, Thursday and Friday, those of us who are sitting here, um, including our superintendent, will be attending master board training in Gainesville. We are very, very excited about that, um, being able to work and plan with our superintendent. And, uh, there are two other counties involved.
Levy and, get the other one.
Osceola.
Osceola.
Levy and Osceola, um, school boards and superintendents will be there also. So, um, we're, I'm very excited about learning everything I can.
Actually, Levy County would be, it'd be a good discussion because they are, they also have done a similar thing with their alternative school.
Okay, great, yeah. I also wanted to mention that our board attorney is not here today because his wife has delivered a, a set of twins, Grace and Graham.
Did she deliver?
Well, they scheduled C-section today, so, um, I assume they're here by now just to announce that to the world. But anyway, he-
True or not?
Yeah. Well, unless something weird happened, um, but anyway. Uh, he, he texted us all to tell us, so, um, I guess I overstepped my boundaries just then. But anyway, we're very excited for Charlie and Bethany. Um, Mr.-
Before, before we go, uh, I just want to mention the career superstars, Renee Huff and her-
Oh, yeah, that was awesome.
Did an awesome job. And we have some fine young people with some skills that are coming out of our high schools. And they are ready for the world of work, and their teachers are to be commended along with their principals and their parents for supporting them and making this a reality for the, I mean, they are, they are loaded.
And Matthew Westbury was this county's technical superstar.
Yes, so I, awesome.
You ready?
Dr. Searcy?
No.
Yeah, speaking of, uh, top students, uh, we're changing the format of our top fifty that we used to do every year, top fifty seniors. We actually have, uh, about top one hundred this year.
Wow.
And I guess we're getting smarter. But, but no, really, the reason for that is, for the first, first time, we have a senior class at, um, at QI Roberts. So it's kinda created, um, a new situation for us. So we are including, uh, students over four point O GPA as well as the students from the other high schools, the top ten percent. So, you know, I think the more the merrier. So we'll be having that, I believe, next Tuesday night. Is that right, the eleventh?
Okay, well, how?
May, May the ninth.
Are we starting at four?
Uh, six.
Okay.
Okay. It will go faster. We won't be there till midnight.
It'll be wonderful, whatever we do.
We are changing the format, but I did want to point out that, you know, a lot of us, a lot of the principals worked on making that equitable, so it should be a good time. Also want to announce, I just received an email that, for the time being, I don't, I don't have Crescent City yet, but in Arken High School and Palacka High School was just awarded the Job for Graduates grant, so, yeah.
Yes. Woo! And what is that?
Um, I know Melissa's not in here. Can somebody give us some details on that? Renee, can you give us, anybody give us details on that grant, Job for Graduates? Don't mean to put you on the spot.
Who was Melissa? Melissa Coleman?
Melissa Coleman was, um-
Um, I can give you just a little bit of information. Um, it allows, I believe, like, right at forty thousand dollars for each one of those high schools. And we're very confident that Crescent City will also get it. I mean, if two of our high schools has gotten it.
Yeah, I think so.
And it allows those resources to be used as, um, additional resources to really focus in on graduating students. Um, so it's just gonna be, um, there, there's some different requirements of that, but it will allow, um, us to possibly have like a part-time additional person. Um, so there's just some different things, but we're very excited about that.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, so we're, we're looking forward to that.
We'll give you more details at our next meeting, for sure. Thank you. Um, our advisory meetings, uh, the last round for this year's are going on now. We have one, as a matter of fact, for the central area tonight in this room at six o'clock. So those of you on the committee, just a reminder, and those of you that would like to come and listen, um, you're invited. So at six o'clock in this room. We have one last night, last night at Enel Arken, and last week at Crescent City. So we're getting some good feedback, good suggestions. Finally, for the not-so-good news, uh, we're getting some, um, pretty disturbing news from Tallahassee on funding for next year. I think we've been talking about our budget workshop, and we were anticipating, um, a one percent increase in funding from last year, which, you know, sounds good, but our expenses are overtaking our revenue. So one percent is just, it's really keeping us in the hole. So we just found out a couple of days ago that we will be getting even less than that, approximately three hundred thousand dollars less than we had last year, which equates to a little bit more than a million dollars less for this coming year, which is devastating for our district right now. But we, you know, we're gonna deal with it in our workshop. We will give you some more information today at, in the afternoon, probably five or six today. They should finalize that as far as the legislature, and then the governor will have till the end of the week to sign that. So it's not good news, but we'll keep you updated on the, the funding part. So we're really having to kinda take a look at what we're doing and make sure that we can not touch our classrooms if at all possible. So we'll keep you updated on that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Meeting is adjourned.